Good morning. I want to welcome you to, well, it's Monday, November 7th. I want to welcome you to the special committee meeting of rules, elections, intergovernmental relations, and the neighborhood committee. Mr. Clerk, why don't you read what we have on the agenda and we'll just take it from there. We do have a quorum. I'm joined by Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson. And I want everybody to be nice to him because today is his birthday. Okay? And my birthday is Friday. So this is the pre-celebration to my birthday. So if you anger Mr. Harris Dawson on my birthday is when the wrath, that's when the hatchet will fall. But no, I want to welcome everybody. Thank you all for coming in, all joking aside. Happy birthday to my dear friend and colleague. So what do we have going?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. We have three items on the agenda today. Pardon me. Item number one is a city attorney report and ordinance relative to calling and ordering a primary nominating election on March 7th, 2017, and a general municipal election on May 16th, 2017 for the offices of mayor, city attorney, comptroller, and member of the Los Angeles City Council, and member of the Board of Education of the Los Angeles Unified School District, and consolidate elections for the offices of the member of the Board of Trustees of the Los Angeles Community College District. We also have item number two, which is a city attorney report, resolutions and ordinances relative to submitting to the voters a proposed charter amendment, changing the maximum length of franchises, concessions, permits, licenses, and leases that may be issued by the Harbor Department from a term of 50 to 66 years, and calling a special election on the measure and consolidating it with the city's election to be held on March 17th, 2017. This is a time limit item with a time limit of November 19th, November 9th for council action. And item number three is a city attorney report, resolutions and ordinances relative to submitting to the voters a ballot measure related to the enforcement, taxation, and regulation of cannabis-related activity in the city of Los Angeles, and calling a special election on the measure and consolidating with the city's election to be held on March 7th, 2017. This item is also a time limit item with the last day for council action of November 9th, 2016.
Okay. Do you have cards? Any cards?
No, sir. We have no cards on any items, nor do we have any cards for general public comment.
Okay. Why don't we ask the appropriate staff to come forward? We'll take up items one and two at this time. Hareet, how are you? Are you the appropriate staff? Are you the only staff? All alone. You should be used to it by now. Okay, give us a quick, the quick skinny on items one and two.
Item one is the ordinance calling the city's primary and general elections for next March and May 2017. It's formality for the council to call the election consistent with the charter and the ordinance before you does that. Item two is city attorney report and resolutions related to a proposed charter amendment to amend section 607 of the charter to increase the maximum term for leases of the Harbor Department from 50 years to 66 years to be consistent with recent changes to state law. That item, if approved by council, by your committee and by council, will also appear on the March 7th, 2017 city ballot.
Okay, we have, I have no questions on these two items. Mr. Harris Dawson, I don't know if you wanted to pipe in. Okay, so on these two items, I think we, without objection, these items will be deemed approved. Let's now go to item three. Mr. Clerk?
Read the item into the record again.
Well, I want to just ask again, we're beginning the conversation and no cards on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing on this. So why don't we go through this item?
Item three is ballot resolutions and ordinance towards a proposed ballot measure for the March ballot related to the enforcement, regulation, and taxation of cannabis-related activities. This was pursuant to council's direction on November 1st. You have before you the documents necessary to place a ballot measure on the March ballot. It covers three general categories pursuant to council's instructions. First, the proposed measure would add heightened enforcement provisions and penalties for unauthorized cannabis-related activities effective January 1, 2018. These include criminal penalties of $1,000 and/or six months in jail, nuisance abatement, civil fines of $20,000 for each offense, and it also authorizes DWP to disconnect utilities for unauthorized cannabis businesses after processes established by the city council. Second category is taxation. The proposed measure establishes new gross receipts taxes for cannabis-related activity, again, effective January 1, 2018. These include $100 for each $1,000 of gross receipts from cannabis sales, $50 for each $1,000 of gross receipts from medical cannabis sales, and then taxes of $10 for each $1,000 of gross receipts from transportation, testing, or research of cannabis, $20 for each $1,000 of gross receipts from the manufacturer, cultivation, or other commercialization of cannabis. The measure also provides that the Office of Finance shall establish certain regulatory procedures regarding the tax. Finally, the measure regulate, has provisions about regarding regulation, excuse me, the proposed measure provides for the repeal of Prop D, the city's existing medical marijuana legislation effective January 1, 2018, unless the council adopts a resolution specifying another date for that repeal. The council retains complete authority and possesses complete authority to regulate all aspects of the cannabis industry through ordinances. The council shall, the measure provides that the council shall convene public hearings with stakeholders regarding a wide variety of subjects related to the commercialization of cannabis or medical cannabis before establishing a regulatory scheme. And the measure also notes that it is presented as an alternative to the initiative that's qualified for the March ballot. And if the measure before you today, it's approved by the voters with more affirmative votes than the initiative, then all of the provisions of this measure would supersede any of the provisions of the initiative. It's an all or nothing provision, much like that's contained in the initiative itself. So that we both present it to the voters as alternatives for the voters to vote on.
Okay, thank you. One thing I want to indicate at this time, on item six of the proposed amendments, if you look down to, I guess, is section three, we'd like to move that to the beginning of this section so that that we can go on record with that. Does that pose a problem? And that's the section, you know, providing that the city council retains the authority to amend existing and adopt new regulations regarding cannabis activity in the city, giving priority to that section.
That would be fine. It's council's discretion to approve the final ballot title, and that change shouldn't create any problems.
So that's the one thing that I know we want to do. We want to make that adjustment. We have, I'd like to call up, and keep, I'd like to keep you around, but make some space. I'd like to call up representatives from the industry. If I could get a couple of you to come up. Please follow the instructions of the sergeant. So I say good morning, and would just like for you guys to identify yourself.
My name is Jared Kylo. I'm the president of the UCVI Trade Association.
My name is Donnie Anderson. I'm the president of the California Minority Alliance and the Southern California Coalition.
Okay. Well, it was good to see you both. Thank, Jared, thank you for Wednesday.
Thank you.
Participating in one of the hearings, and we've got a few more that are scheduled. Well, I think I already dealt with the public comment once we began the conversation. Anyway, we'll see. So I already closed it. But we, we wanted to talk about language, you know, where you're aware that there's some language that could amend what it is we're trying to do here. The only thing where it relates to that is there's no reference to outlets or dispensaries that have not been good partners with the community. And if we are going to highlight those that have been, I'm just, it makes sense to me that we try to come up with a way that we can, that there's some sentence or phrase that deals with those that have not been.
The rogue shops.
Well, whatever title.
How do we pre-qualify in this time period what is a good and a bad actor in this industry when right now we're trying to make sure that we've like established at least a foundation for which us to build on so that the property shops do kind of continue to operate? I mean, there are going to be plenty of times continuing, because every year we're going to have to reapply for a permit. There is that time period to be able to now not give a renewal to someone on the second year.
I get that.
We've been dealing with good and bad actors for over a decade, so an extra year on top of that, it seems like we have a little bit of time.
I get that. The one thing I'm trying to get to is a point, or to be sensitive to community folk that have concerns, and I understand there's definition.
Yeah.
Problems, but there, there should be, to elevate their comfort level, there's got to be something that we can say so that it doesn't give the impression that we won't have a watchful eye, you know, on those who have created a nuisance or what have you. And so one of the reasons why I had hoped to have you two come up is so that maybe we could have a back and forth as to how we could deal with that.
Sure. Well, we know how to.
In, but, but no, I'm talking about in language that enhances the opportunity of this being approved by the voters.
So we have to take out of like kind of compliance of Prop D, because that seems to give us at least like the regulations of how our industry is moving forward, but you're trying to look for a qualifier for, you know, city, like for, you know, the homeowners' association in Sherman Oaks, or some of these kind of local communities, like a qualifier that says what is good and what is bad?
Well, I don't know, Jared, what I'm, at this point, so that's why we're just having a back and forth. I have found that in the past, when we engage with you guys, it's been helpful. And so that's why you've been invited to come in and sit and just be part of this conversation.
I think one of the proposed, like, language changes was qualified, and I, I hear that, I hear that, but I guess what is qualified? I think if we leave these subjective terms in this document, it kind of leaves everything up for interpretation, and I think that's the thing that we're most, kind of, that's kind of where the pushback is coming from.
I get that.
So I, I hear we're trying to find that word that kind of lets everyone feel like we're in this process together about finding who's a good and a bad actor, without pigeonholing some of the property shops into now being subjectively looked at as a bad actor when we feel like we're a good one. And so I think that's where, since there aren't any qualifiers that are really even up for interpretation or that we're even talking about, it's hard to give that one word. So I'm, I'm also here to try to figure out what that one word can be.
But here's, here's the issue. The property shops is not in our neighborhoods. All the ones in our neighborhoods is rogue shops. The ones that's in your community, Marquis, the ones in by my mom's house, those are the rogue shops. I lived in the Crenshaw district all my life, and if you come over in my neighborhood, you see shops next to churches, shops next to preschools, those are the ones that needs, they're not Prop D, and we can identify those. I don't think it's too many Prop D shops that's being rogue out here at all.
Marquis, or Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I think, I thank you all for being part of the hearing last week and a part of this process, which is a very long but important process for the city. I think council president pointed out that, you know, this is, we're setting the framework for a discussion that we'll probably be having for the next 15 or 20 years on the city, because it's such a long overdue change to our law with respect to marijuana. I think, I would echo the concerns of the council members. I think, you know, those of us who go before neighborhood councils, homeowners groups, church groups, the, the distinction between Prop D and non-Prop D compliant frankly is insider language, right? So we know it, you know it, those involved knows. Every neighborhood council I go to, first, marijuana shops are usually the third or fourth issue to come up. They come up everywhere, and people have no idea whose Prop D, like, they just, they're like, what do you mean, some are Prop D compliant? So for, as an example, in my district, we have 133 businesses that are dealing marijuana. We have four of them that are Prop D compliant. So there, I know, for me, I need something, some language here that lets me go back to the neighborhood council and says, okay, see, we're going to deal with all those folks. And Prop D compliant and non-Prop D compliant doesn't quite get there, even though I understand, I mean, I understand the logistics of that, and, and, you know, I can say, because we've checked it out, the four Prop D compliant places in my district are ones that no one ever complains about, I'll put it that way. But we need some kind of signal to send to folks that lets them know, you know, these actors are going to go away. The places where there have been homicides in front, the places that are open till 1:00 in the morning, or 2:00 in the morning, the places that have kids hanging out by them, I mean, just all the sort of typical nuisance, nuisance problems that people have come to associate with marijuana businesses.
And see, I don't think that, Jared.
We wanted to, we wanted to invite you to help us, so we're affording you that opportunity. And so.
It, it seems like having compliance in there really is the foundation, even for city, even for the local, local city, local governments and local kind of neighborhood councils, compliance really is the foundation for the way that the city will move forward legally and illegally. I mean, you just sent out 164 BTRCs to legally operating shops. Now, that seems like that's another qualifier we might be able to use, but it seems like compliance really does give the strength to the city council to decide what is.
But suppose, so I'm asking you to think outside of the box.
Okay.
And, and, and I don't, and I know we're kind of putting you on the spot, and it's not, it's not because we want it.
No.
To do that. So we're asking you to try to expand the creativity and, 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 and help us, I mean, we hear you, I hear you.
Yeah.
But if you heard Mr. Dawson, you know, some of what we're saying is insider baseball, and we're talking about Aunt May and Uncle George and, you know, Uncle Jose and all of that. And so is there not a clearer way to indicate that for those who have created nuisances, or nuisance, or the, that's what we're struggling with? And we would not want to put something in there on our own without having this input.
I appreciate that, because that makes all, that makes us feel like really supported by the city and trying to kind of.
We're trying.
No, I feel it. I think, I think, because every time I kind of work towards, are we going to talk about nuisance issues and how many people have kind of complained, but the problem with that is there's just some people who don't like the industry in and of itself, and so they could complain as a nuisance just because they don't like the industry. And that's where the subjectivity of even someone who complains, it might be in their best interest, or they might think that it's just like a, something that's going to hurt the children, and so I'm, I'm kind of even sensitive to even people who even come as saying we are a nuisance, where their foundation for that is.
Let me, let me ask the city attorney to come, come back. You hear us?
No, I told, I do, and I, every time I, I try to find a word, I, in my mind.
Yeah, I was directing this to Hareet.
Oh, sorry.
Hareet, you hear all of us struggling to try to, do you have any ideas or can you, you know, maybe say something that helps move this conversation even a little more? And maybe not, you know, so just. And maybe not, you know, so just.
I'm going to defer to Asha of Greenberg of her office. She has a one notion that we can put forward.
Hi.
Yes, good morning. My name is Asha Greenberg and I've been listening and I understand completely what council member Harris-Dawson is saying. I think what you're saying is that there's no bright line. In other words, there's no way to tell whether a particular operation is Prop D compliant or not. And I think what the council is proposing to do in the future is going to address that because you're going to have a licensing or permitting process so everyone will know clearly. I think what council is struggling with is trying to tell who the bad actors are, even if they have a license or they're property compliant, who are the bad actors? Who are the ones who are generating all the complaints? And for that, property doesn't really provide a process. It just provides for limited immunity based on a number of criteria being met and those don't address being a good actor or a bad actor. That can be addressed, I believe, in the future if the council puts in some kind of a public hearing process for businesses that have perhaps generated complaints. And then there can be a process, there can be a hearing where even the industry or the operator can be heard from, who can articulate whatever their feelings on the subject in the neighborhood can say how they're being impacted, whether it's children or it's people smoking outside or if it's excess traffic, but they can articulate those concerns and everybody can be heard. But I think that can be part of the licensing and the permitting process that council is contemplating is going to take place in the future.
But here's the issue though.
Go ahead.
The, the, one of the main reasons we having issues with bad actors are because of the attorneys are telling them that they can open up and if they be raided because it's no license. And that's one of the main problems we're having and dealing with right now. A lot of these bad actors are operating because of these greedy attorneys.
Go on, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you for your, your input. I mean, that's one thing I want to acknowledge, especially to those of you, you know, who are helping, trying to help us come up with some language. One of this, one of the reasons in my opinion that this is confusing to residents and voters is because the message coming from the city has been sort of duplicatious, right? So it's, on the one hand, we have this process and Prop D people are illegal and everybody else is illegal, except that we really effectively don't do anything about the people who are not Prop D compliant. I mean, we just don't. I mean, not in a way where people can see and feel it, right? So, you know, before I came on this council, we had a situation where we had two shops, illegal shops, right across the street from a drug treatment facility. And we did, we worked with the city attorney's office, we got them closed and you know what happened? Those same two people moved down the block and there was no anything. And, and that, from my point of view, without knowing the, all the history and, and the inner workings of the law, that to me is on the city. That's not the industry's fault. Like we didn't, we did that. But what that's done is put us in a position where we have to do things like draw bright red, bright lines so people can see, okay, this is a, this is a real thing now.
I think, I think we're also not giving the space for these bad actors, once they feel like they are secure in, in their legality, to have them step up to be good actors. I think what's happening is when you're in competition with a lot of illegal shops, you start to do illegal activity because you're in direct competition with someone who's got a thirty percent advantage over you, not paying taxes. So I think we also have to give that space for these exclusive licenses to be given to people and know that they now are the leaders in this industry and they get an opportunity to become a good actor because we can, you know, draw in our community as we tell people, you need to be a part of your community and, and give back. We can, we can as an industry give them better guidelines to integrate into their own communities. I think we're, we're, we want to point a finger at who's good and bad, but we don't have a foundation for who is good and what is, what those good actors are. Since we don't know what that looks like, we can't tell people how to be, continue to be a good actor because the city's not taking an effective role in getting rid of the bad actors. So that line is very blurred for the industry. So once that line is clearly defined, I really think that the bad actors who have a license will become good actors because we're, we're giving them clear regulations and guidelines.
Okay, I, I, I want to ask something. I think, given what you suggested, your name again, I'm so sorry.
Asha Greenberg.
Asha?
Yes.
Green, Ms. Greenberg. What you said made a lot of sense. So what if we were to take, I guess that's article five point two, we go down to section forty-five point nineteen point seven point two point, council authority to regulate cannabis-related activity after public hearings. Yeah, section B, it says public hearings. And then under the rules, there are rules one through like ten. Maybe we could add a sentence in, in that section that deals with the, and then maybe that's something that we can all live with. And I think I'm going to get some suggestions as to maybe where we could do that. This is some language that I think we, Mr. Bloomingfield and I had spoken of earlier, but maybe that's how we could address it. And I would think that the two of you would not have a problem with that.
Well, I mean, as, as long as it's really, it's very specific what a good and bad actor is, I think this is
Well, I don't know if we even do it quite that way.
Okay.
So why don't you let us kind of dittle around for a second with the language? And I will open up, I've got a few cards, so don't move. Let's get Sean. Again, I remember Sean from Wednesday. I believe you were at the hearing. So come to the center aisle, we're going to have you speak. And then Javier? And I don't know, this other card, I don't know who, who it is. If you don't write your name down on the card, I'm not going to try to figure out who you are, okay? So, go ahead, man. Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well, council. My take is very in line with, with Jared's actually. It's, it's kind of hard to distinguish what's good and bad actors. However, I know if you look at the collectives that have been paying their taxes and complying with Prop D, it's easy to distinguish those who are good and who, who aren't good. Other suggestions I could potentially make in respect to how can we identify those bad actors would be to see who is willing to comply going forward with the different requirements of Prop D and city compliance.
Okay, I appreciate that. If I could have Javier.
Good morning, council members. My name is Javier Montes. I'm an executive board member of V C B A. And I am here to support the recommendations on council file number seventeen.
Javier, you were there Wednesday too, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
I feel that this is a step in the right direction as it gives us the framework. And also I was very happy and very grateful to receive a B T R C or L O five oh that was sent out. From my understanding, a hundred and sixty-four of those went out. That gives us a good base of a number that was outside of our original Prop D ordinance to look at as a foundation moving forward. So I think the discussions that we're having here are very productive and I'm in favor of the recommendations in front of us today.
Okay, thank you. So I think, Donnie, you had something.
Yeah, and one of the problems that we having is with Prop D and how these attorneys is, is, is getting these rogue actors to, to keep their shops open is because of the Compassionate Youth Act. They're being able to tell they, they clients to keep doing what you're doing until the city puts forth something. And if we continue to work on the framework that we working on, I think we can put them out of business because license will put them out of business. We'll know how that, how it looks to, to, to put an end to this. This is a problem. In my community, it's a serious problem. You leave off my mother's block on Seventh Avenue and Seventy-third in Florence, we have four shops, four. And open the one o'clock, you hear a shooting and my mom then is, is getting up there in that age and we need to deal with this. I can't speak of when no one else community, but mine, this is a problem. And I'm part of my church community and everything and, and we want to see better.
I agree. If we really truly draw the line of what the city's regulations are and the enforcement behind it, bad actors will leave, landlords will realize that there is a, a penalty for not doing their due diligence to find out who is legal and who isn't. And I really think the hundred and sixty-four B T R Cs that were, that were released does give landlords at least something to look at when it comes to qualifying who is a, who is compliant or not with Prop D.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Andrew to hand something to Ms. Greenberg and Harriet, maybe you can look at it and clean it, clean it up. Again, it would go into the section that deals with the public hearings. Andrew, you may want to stay over there in case there's a question.
This would be in addition to one of the ten rules under public hearings, okay?
Yeah, would be something I think that, that you could work with. So why don't we, yeah.
That seems, that seems, that seems good. I mean, as, as in, as in addition to another rule.
Well, we want to be fair. So why don't I give that to the city attorney's office, ask you guys to refine it? If, if, if Andrew, if they need some more guidance from us. So why don't you kind of indicate to everybody that's here what we're looking at adding?
So this would be a, an amendment to the recommendations coming out of committee today to add language that provides that the city will identify and address issues of compliance, complaints and civil or criminal proceedings related to Prop D medical marijuana dispensaries as part of the public hearing process. And that's the public hearing process that will take place before any new regulatory scheme would be adopted by us.
And so, understanding what, what, what you guys said, this is, and, and what Ms. Greenberg said, this is probably the best place to deal with some of the concerns we talked about earlier.
Yeah, I think one of my concerns is how many times are we going to have to come to a public hearing and how many public hearings are you going to have to be a part of to decide who is a good and bad actor?
Well, I think we'll have to, this thing evolves. But I think this gives us enough to move forward and, and start the process. I want to ensure that I, this committee can recommend something to our colleagues tomorrow.
But here's a good idea. Put, put us on the committee with you guys to help point out some of these bad actors because as we see it now, the city attorney, they don't, they're not recognizing
Well, I think one thing that's, that we've proven just in the short period of time that we have been dialoguing with you is that we do objectively review the things that you suggest to us and that we respect your knowledge. And going forward, in order to make anything work, there's going to have to be a back and forth, I, between us. Mr. Harris-Dawson? Are you good? Okay, so at this point then, why don't we, the, the, the public hearing is closed, so I would say without objection that we adopt the recommendations as amended and have them processed and ready for council. And with that said, that'll be the order. Mr. Clerk, any additional business before this committee?
No, sir, that clears the desk.
Thank all of you and this committee is adjourned.